All right, we have returned to open session. So at this time, is there any public comment?
Last I checked, I do not have any, but let me just check on the line. We do not have any public comment.
Okay, sign them on the agenda as the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget. Is there a motion for the board to open the budget hearing for approving the fiscal year 2021 budget?
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
So, Mr. Fitten, you have something to present?
This is an opportunity for the public to comment on the budget. We'll have a little more presentation later with the action item.
Okay.
If there's anyone who would like to comment.
All right, do we have any comment on the fiscal 2021 budget? All right. Is there a motion to declare the budget hearing for approving the fiscal 2021 budget to be closed?
Come on.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, closed down seven.
Okay, at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, I'll move to the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Dan. I wanted to start with just an update on our return to learn plan. I know that's a significant issue for everyone involved. So I wanted to share with the board and with the public too that we have, as you know, put out a survey about our in-person return to learn plan with the remote option. And we have currently 27.5% of our student population that has selected the remote academy as their preferred return to learn model. 70.5% of the district students have selected the hybrid model. And then we have just less than 2% of District 96 students that have opted for homeschooling instead of returning to school this year in the public school situation. We also know that the Illinois Department of Public Health released some significant updated guidance, which we have been studying carefully and reviewing as a leadership team. So that is significant. That information is available on our website. Our building principals are in the process of looking at our school entry procedures and protocols for social distancing, careful reviews of symptom checks by parents and guardians. We're also going to be doing onsite temperature checks, and that information will be shared with families. It has been shared with families, but we'll be making sure that we are continually updating them on any changes to those procedures. But those procedures are well underway, thanks to our principals. The other thing that I wanted to share is just information about the significant professional development planning and preparation that our teachers will be participating in. And again, our teachers have asked that perhaps they have more of that professional development learning, that we know that this is a very unique and unusual school year that we have coming up. So you're going to hear from me, and I'll mention it now, that we would like to move our first day of school from September 1st to September 2nd in an opportunity to provide an additional day of professional development. And that would really provide us that building level time, in particular, to practice some of these protocols and entry procedures and make sure all of our roles and responsibilities are absolutely clear for all of our staff, so that they'll be clear for all of our students on the first day of school. We also want to acknowledge the work that is underway right now with Riverside Parks and Rec and with Brookfield Parks and Recreation, with the possibility of providing childcare to our families and also to the children of employees, if that's something that they're interested in. The other thing, and I know it's absolutely key, is that we are carefully monitoring, obviously, the positivity metrics for our region. We are aware that that has continued to creep up in our area. As of today, it was 6.4% for the Region 10 suburban Cook County. So again, it is possible, I know the Restore Illinois has established the positivity metric of 8% as an indicator in which schools would need to become fully remote. So again, carefully monitoring that, we still have just about two weeks before school opens. We have great hope that those positivity metrics would reverse, but we are concerned about seeing them trend in the wrong direction for the schools. But again, all of those pieces, and I know I mentioned very significant details kind of all here in one cohesive fashion, but they are kind of the core elements and key elements of our, just the return to learn update. The most significant details are in the presentation that we did here on August 5th, and we've made that presentation available again to families, and it's available on our website if anybody has any questions about that. So any additional comments or thoughts on that, on the board?
I did have one question there. You mentioned suburban Cook County. Is that the, that's the measurement that we're using?
That is the measurement that we're using at this time. There are measurements also specifically by ZIP Code, as you know, that's also available for us. Given that our teachers really come from a region, we've been tending and trending and looking at that positivity metric specifically. We really look at all of them, but that is the one that, I also believe that's the one that Restore Illinois would use then for a shift. The other thing I want to shift to, I mean, I feel like there's so much critical information here at the start of this really unique school year. The other is construction. We are, I think, I think sometimes I almost forget, in the midst of this pandemic, the really tremendous and very significant work that is going on in four of our five buildings. I had an opportunity to tour the buildings yesterday with Ramesh, and I know Ramesh is here to give us an update on the construction. But the construction happening and nearing completion here is truly transformative in terms of just the modernization of our buildings, the creation of more large group learning spaces, the, just the color and the child-centeredness of all of the design ideas are really wonderful to see. I know we all have a regret that these spaces will not necessarily be used exactly as they were developed and intended. Eventually, we will get there and be able to use them. We are taking advantage of all these additional spaces as we look at the opportunity to socially distance even more and bring our students back to school. So with that, I know Ramesh is going to give us a more detailed update, and then I have a few other details related to that that I'll add.
Sure. I'll start with the good part, which is the positivity index, which is the schools, the construction will finish in time. That's the best part of it. So let me start with the challenges of the construction that we've gone through. I mean, we've constructed almost $15 million worth of construction in less than six months. That's a huge challenge under any circumstance. And with the pandemic raging, our supply chains were busted in places which we didn't expect. We got through that for the most part, but I have a feeling that we're going to squeak through with our inspections, which are due next Monday with the ROE, the Regional Office of Education inspections. We'll get past that. But let me start with Ames. So Ames is where we have the most amount of work in progress. It's a close to a $10 million project. If you go out there, you'll see an army of people working out there, and most of site work will be finished by next week, Wednesday. That's the big challenge that we have right now, but it's essentially on three sides of the building. The interior construction is coming along really well. It's, there's, you know, flooring finishes, there's controls that are going in, but we'll finish the work. And essentially, by Wednesday of next week, we should have casework in place as well, and the project will move to bunch list. So actually, Ames is the largest project. It's looking good. Blythe will be finished by Monday of next week, except for one issue, which is the exterior rain screen. We've been chasing the contractor. It's one of our products that arrived from Spain. One of the control pieces on that is missing. And unfortunately, we're trying to find a piece that can work in lieu of that, and so far, we've been unable to find it. So the building looks incomplete from outside. It's weather tight, the roof is all finished, but the rain screen, we have the rain screen itself, but we can't install it without this one closure piece. And so we're trying to track that down, and hopefully, I'll have an answer tomorrow if we can have a substitute for that. But as you recall, it's a historic building, so we can't put any product in there. It has to match, it has to work with what we had promised the historical preservation department. That's on Blythe. Central, we're looking good. All the interior finishes, you can, the elevator is functioning. We have one last inspection left on that, but if you look at the interiors, it's come along really well. It's in looking great shape. I mean, we've made major progress over the last couple of weeks, and it'll be done, except out here. The one challenge is the exterior. We had a storm sewer line that was indicated, which we had to tie into, and we had pulled a MWRD permit on that. Unfortunately, when they went to tie into it, they found that there are three large trees at the entrance. Those tree roots have penetrated the lines and destroyed the piping. So there's no way that we can use that to tie in to the existing storm lines, which means we need to pull a new permit after locating brand-new sewer lines. So the impact of that is the exterior of the building will look a bit incomplete when we pull the new MWRD permit. Our civil engineer is working on drawings as I speak, because this was located only about a week ago. We tried jetting through it. That means we tried to create a new path. Unfortunately, the response we got was that if we leave the tree, if we want to save the tree, after all, it's a large tree, it's an 80 to 100-foot tree, we would end up destroying the tree in the process. So we decided to save the tree and put in a new line, and that new line requires a new permit, unfortunately, with MWRD. So I mentioned this to Pete today, that it'll be a challenge, because the main entrance to the building will be blocked while we pull the permit. Once we get the permit, the work, actual work is only about five days, four to five days at the most. But it's a challenge that we face on that. That's on the exterior. It won't impact the interior of the building. We will finish there. Hollywood, we're in great shape. We will finish the project this Friday. There's one or two small pieces of casework that's missing, but other than that, the interior is all complete. Again, all inspections are scheduled to take place next Monday. And we're making good progress, as I said, on the whole. I believe we're about 90, 95% complete. This last week, we'll push through the last 5% and be done. So it's a big challenge, but we're getting there.
Any questions for Ramesh while he's here?
I just wanted to thank you for making the effort to save the large trees, because those obviously add a lot of the...
Absolutely. I mean, there was no other way. I mean, once they, they camera the sewer line, the roots were right through the pipe, so it had destroyed the pipe in the process. And, you know, there was just nothing, I mean, it didn't make any sense to destroy the tree, because you had to put a new line anyways. So the alternate was to do it the right way.
Ramesh, how long do you think it will take to get MWRD permit from the board?
Normally, these things take between two to three weeks. But with the pandemic, it's been anyone's guess, because you recall when we were doing the Ames permit for the major storm drainage issue, they took two months to give us a permit. So, I mean, I'd hate to have the front of the building all, you know, fenced in for two months, but unfortunately, we held up based on what they, when they released us to do the work. So it's going to be a challenge for Pete to get the students into the building, since the main entrance is going to be closed. I mean, there's no other way, because it's dug up. The stairs really don't function right now, because we have to pour out a small pad after the work is done. So it makes no sense to do a temporary construction and then destroy that. It'll end up costing us more. Here's the other part of the thing. If you recall, when we talked about the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, we had built in contingencies, and I had mentioned we would be pulling back savings. I can't tell you the number of new projects that we fixed at Central, at Ames, all within that budget. I've not come back to ask you for a single dollar, because we managed to work it within that. We will have a change, obviously, on this exterior work at Central. But essentially, we built another 10 to 15 new projects within that same budget. I was very happy that Burgland cooperated with us. We managed to keep a, run a tight ship with them. We had a change of management. A number of project managers left their job. We had changes in superintendents, but overall, the company came through for us, and they've done a great job.
Thank you, Ramesh. The other, I just wanted to continue to update the board and the community about our long-range facilities plan in general. So this is incredibly exciting that we are this close to completion of some very significant projects and certainly very significant dollars. I know there's a couple other things that the board has been somewhat brought up to speed on. One is the Blythe Park MOU for the parking lot reconfiguration there, or potential reconfiguration. The other is the Hauser Auditorium Sound and Light Project, which has been a project that I know the district has been considering for some time. The Central Hauser Exterior Campus Visioning work that has been work in progress. And then the other thing I do want to touch on briefly is building tours for all of you. I really want you to have an opportunity to see the changes to our facilities. And then tonight, we're also going to be talking about a finalized lease agreement with Hollywood Citizens Association, which again, is a very significant part of the long-range facilities work that we have been contemplating, considering, and implementing for some period of time. Couple thoughts. I would like to suggest that the Blythe Park MOU, as well as the Hauser Sound and Light Project, be referred back to the Facilities Advisory Committee, just for additional conversation. I think both of them have some interesting questions around scope that could be modified or changed or directed differently, based on some committee conversations. So that would be my suggestion to address both of those in committee and then bring them back for more board discussion. The Central Hauser Campus Visioning, as you know, we postponed that. It was actually going to be an August presentation, and with the importance of our return to learn plan, we intentionally postponed that. And now, just looking at scheduling, it looks like it would be an October 7th committee, the whole meeting, to bring that information back to the Board of Education and to the community. The lease agreement with Hollywood Citizens Association is actually as an action item here later on on our agenda. And then I did just want to take a minute, though, and seriously think about building tours for the Board of Education. And I was walking with Ramesh yesterday, and I said, you know, typically, you would do some kind of ribbon-cutting ceremony, and it doesn't feel maybe like the wage to do things during a pandemic. And then we decided that, you know, perhaps socially distanced and mask-wearing, really the community still really ought to celebrate the significant changes to our facilities, which, as you know, will also include a playground being, you know, implemented, placed at Ames School. And this has been such a long-awaited project, and to think that it's going to happen kind of in the midst of all this, and children really aren't even going to be able to use it right now. But again, there will come the right time when we will be able to fully utilize all of these important changes in the facility. So again, something I could follow up with the board, but we had talked everything from organizing a special meeting, which might be a little cumbersome to have a walking, touring meeting. The other ideas, the Board of Education could certainly convene and could have a tour, and just the agreement would be that there would be no formal business discussion that would be happening. It would really be just to see the building. So just wanted to get some board feedback on that.
I definitely want to see buildings. I'm not sure I have an opinion whether to do something, maybe just a tour, but yeah.
Can we visit them two at a time?
What's that?
Could we see the buildings two at a time?
We could see them two at a time. And we could also, you know, I did talk with our attorney, and we could see them if you wanted to, all seven. We could invite Bob, uh, Hughes or Bob Skolnick to join us. They would certainly keep us honest in not having any board discussion. I mean, I know the board would be that way, but, you know, that would be one way, is that to include the press in it as well. So, so that would be, I think that might be my recommendation. I would, I would love for all of you to see it together, and for it to be a bit of a celebration, too, for all the hard work, the planning, and considerations. I know this was, this is really years coming to what is happening here this summer, years and years of your work.
That would work for me.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll go, I'll go ahead and work through some dates and talk to Ramesh, and he was suggesting maybe even mid-September, when things are, you know, truly finished, all cleaned up, and get a chance to take a closer look then. Okay. And then the other things, of course, every year at this time, we talk about what's going to happen with our Institute Days. Those are our days of professional development for our staff. And then also, new teacher mentoring induction. Our, our new teachers arrived today and started that process just today. So it's great to see our nine new teachers, and had an opportunity to welcome them, certainly welcome them under unique circumstances. But they were all here today and eager to be here and to start their work in District 96. So we'll have some information for you there. And that is my superintendent's report.
One question, two questions about the...
Interfere, mic, please, the other.
Is that working now?
Not yet. It seemed to cut out the last time you were talking.
Yeah.
You have to start the sound.
I can hear everybody's arguing.
Okay, can we out? Hello?
No, we can hear you, but not through the microphone.
Okay. Maybe please. So basically, my question is, on the, so with regard to the long-range facility plan, would it be really helpful if, next time we talk about it, if you could maybe give us an overview, or give us an overview of what's in the long-range facility plan for the major projects, in terms of the scope and the expected cost? And then compare that to the current expected scope or proposed scope and cost for the major projects we're considering, like the life-to-life parking lots, the Hauser Sound and Light, and the Central Hauser Campus. So I think it would really, really helpful to see that, you know, how that's changed from the plan that we adopted two years ago to now, if it has changed. And then the other thing, I think this, and this is maybe a little more work, so I don't know what other people on the board think about this, is with regard to the major projects that we have undertaken and are going to undertake. You mentioned that the projects we're working on now, we had the Blythe roof a couple years ago, we had the projects we're talking about for next year. If, for the major projects, you could keep, or you or Mr. Fitten can keep a running total of, again, what was expected when we adopted the plan, the cost and scope, versus what actually transpired when we did the projects? And I think that'd be very useful, because I believe Mr. Fitten uses the facility plan in order to estimate, you know, costs for the budget in the long, in the long run. So if we know how those costs actually shake out compared to what we expected, it'd be very useful in planning. So those are my, those are my two questions or comments. One's a sort of simple thing, the others are a little more involved.
Do you see it primarily from a cost perspective? I mean, from, from a cost perspective?
Yeah, so basically, the scope, like, what was the scope originally in the plan and the cost originally estimated versus the scope that we actually go with or propose and the cost that we actually go with? How are those different?
Not just the money, but the actual...
The actual...
Yeah. We're going to do this tiny parking lot, we did this tiny parking, yeah. So the dimensions are, I'm struggling with the right word, but yeah.
Exactly.
Something I'm sure Mr. Fitten and I may be even engaged with DLA to put all that together. And Ramesh?
Sort of like a postmortem, it kind of sounds like.
I was going to say, it's kind of exceding the lines of what's actually happening. Like, the plan was, here's what we should be doing, and now this is going to be...
Yeah, so the plan says, maybe we're doing to do X, Y, and Z, and we're proposing to do A, B, and C, and why is that?
And there's...
Right, and why is that? What's the reason for that? What's the reason for the change? What's, that sort of thing? So it's not just sort of, so at least we feel like we're going timely back and saying, okay, we didn't make a change.
Yeah, this was a decision, yeah.
I mean, essentially, like Dan said, it's a postmortem. A pre-mortem in some cases, because we're, you know, some of the projects we haven't yet done. But we, I would still like to know, like, what, so we, like, part of it's postmortem, part of it's like, okay, we said we're going to do this and that and the other thing, it's, you know, major projects, but then we actually get around to doing them. Is the scope still the same as what we thought? And is the price, what's the price relative to what we thought?
Because the plan, we're going back to the plan.
Exactly.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Happy to do that. I think it's just a good document for the district to have, too.
Yeah, it's just a history.
Yeah, from hypothetical to reality, eventually. There you go, there's our title, okay.
Any other questions for Martha? All right, if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can the board secretary read tonight's consent agenda?
Yes. Let me get to it. All right. Okay, tonight's consent agenda consists of meeting, meeting minutes for the previous meeting for July 15th, 2020, closed meeting, and the regular business meeting. The personnel report as presented, the return to learn 2020, 2021 COVID-19 personnel recommendation considerations, payables pre-list July 31, 2020, payables pre-list August 19, 2020, and that is all.
And can I just make it, the personnel considerations, I believe we had intended to kind of have that more as a separate item outside the consent agenda, just that we want to be more board discussion on that?
All right. Does anybody, we need a motion to pull that, I think?
I mean, pull.
Pull it? Yeah. Anybody saw it?
Second.
Okay. So everything I said except for that. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda subtracting the return to learn COVID-19 personnel recommendations as presented?
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Okay. Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, and then, so it should be discussion on the individual item?
Right, and this is, again, if the board could sort of establish some direction, I don't know if this is a formal action item, but these are, these are things we had talked about somewhat informally, but wanted to bring this forward. So one of the things we had talked about is having a permanent substitute teacher position at each of our five schools. We know that from the Illinois Department of Public Health guidance, that staff members that present with even one symptom of what could possibly be COVID, but does include everything from kind of what might be common cold symptoms to more stomach aches and that kind of thing, and headaches that are of an unexplained origin, really are going to be encouraged to take a day off of work, or take two days off of work, or whatever it is, so that they are not coming to work with symptoms, because if they come to work with symptoms that appear to be COVID-related, they could be asked to stay home for a longer period of time in quarantine. So we do anticipate, unfortunately, that there will be staff absences more than in normal times. So I think having permanent substitutes on our staff, so a permanent substitute means somebody that you have essentially promised that they will have a substitute assignment every single day of the school year. So we would like to add that position, again, something that we had talked about. We've actually already posted for that, but wouldn't fill it without board agreement and board direction on that. The other thing that we've talked about for a little bit, again, more informally, and would like to formalize the approach, is, and this idea of some remote learning coaches that would be stipended. So, meaning stipended means they would be our own staff members, staff members that have demonstrated that they have a lot of skill and also have taken leadership roles in coaching and providing professional development informally to, and sometimes formally, actually, through some of our training programs. But again, we thought it would be a nice way to recognize staff that have really done some above and beyond work in this area by providing them with an annual stipend of, I'm proposing $6,000 per position, and again, looking at several... leadership roles in coaching and providing professional development informally to, and sometimes formally, actually, through some of our training programs. But again, we thought it would be a nice way to recognize staff that have really done some above and beyond work in this area by providing them with an annual stipend of, I'm proposing $6,000 per position, and again, looking at several for the district to, again, help teachers in both the remote learning situation, and as well as knowing that even, we know that even in the in-person situation, there's still a remote learning component. So, again, think that that would be time and money and a staffing pattern that would be well used. So those, again, are not new positions, not new staff members, but providing an opportunity for our current staff members to address those kinds of skills with their colleagues. The other one that I just made note of, and it really isn't something that we need to have any additional staff, has just been our kindergarten staffing plan, so as we are starting to put together student assignments, now that we know the students that have opted for the remote academy and students that have opted for in-person learning, with our goal of not having more than 15 students in a in-person classroom, we did do some reconfiguring of kindergarten, but we are able to do all that within our current staffing. So no new staffing needed there, but want you to just understand that we're really setting up more sections of kindergarten in an effort to keep those class sizes at our socially-distanced recommended class size for, for this school year. So again, I, you know, I think having some direction, the board would actually formally approve these positions when I would come forward and recommend to you who would be in those positions, but again, sort of a, a direction from the board about a willingness to move forward with these considerations.
Do you have any questions about that, or?
Sure.
Are you thinking, because we have different concerns, is middle school, remote, and elementary, I mean, I assume that there'd have to be several at the middle school levels? When you say several, is that really gonna encompass all the buildings, or how, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we did talk about one per building, and we know that, you know, Hollywood staffing plan is very different than a Hauser staffing plan, and I, I don't know, is April here? I know Chris is standing over there. Directly behind the podium, so I couldn't see you. You also set up some co-teaching arrangements, and there's a little bit of flexibility built into the schedule for teachers, but again, April, do you want to share just a little bit more about the, the substitute question?
Yes, so. Sorry, I was asking about the remote learning.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, the coaching, because we need coaches for different types of remote learning.
Right. Right. I think that this is something, sorry, I misunderstood the question. You know, I think this is something, because we've really done a lot of collaborative work in this area, and there, whether it's working in grade level bands or working with specific technologies, I don't know that it's necessarily, like, per grade level, I think it's going to be more per the skill sets needed and, and the kind of support that we would like to provide to our teachers. And again, we, again, setting out an idea, then we would reach out to our staff, I know we've had conversations internally about this idea that we, we know that people are, are working really hard, that this has been, just from last spring, kind of a taxing situation, it's been a really different way of teaching, and is it fair to ask teachers that are already working so hard to do more? But what we have noticed is that there are teachers that are kind of naturals at it, that are just really good at helping their peers in that kind of situation, and I think for some of those people, they don't see it as necessarily a lot more and a lot harder, it's something that they're very interested in, very skilled at doing, and so I think it, it could really help us as we really just want to fill any kind of void, fill any need for our staff to have that additional coaching and support.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it is definitely need, I mean, years ago, I had to teach people about grade book, and it, you know, and it's a learning curve, and, but to have, I think it'd be valuable for me as a teacher if I had someone that knew the kind of students that I had, versus if they have kindergarten, they're gonna have different needs, and if they, you know, are teaching algebra. So, thank you for clarifying.
So we have a kind of a formal piece in our teacher contract where stipends are actually approved by the board. I'm not asking for your approval tonight, but if there's a sense that the board is enough in agreement that we would kind of go out and seek those positions and then, and then bring it back for formal approval? Or if there's, I guess if there's a lot of reservations about it, would be, would be valuable to, to know, to you?
I, I, I think it's definitely valuable, I know teaching in person versus teaching in remote, I mean, is completely different, and there are definitely new skills that you need to do remote, so I do think would be something very valuable to coach teachers on.
I agree. And I would imagine a lot of the stipends that we normally do won't be coming into play this year, maybe uncertain we're not gonna be having basketball games at Hauser, or, you know, some of the other, so it seems like a good use of resources. I mean, if you can have basketball games, it would be great if that ever happens, but.
But not for now, we know that our sports conference has been suspended for the, for the pandemic, and so a lot of those stipends are on hold, and I think this, right, I think this is a nice opportunity to, for staff.
That makes a lot of sense, definitely.
Thank you.
In regards, though, to the permanent substitute positions, now, is that something, if the district were to move to a full remote situation, that we would still see a need for that, or as much of a need?
I don't think we would see as much of a need at all, you know, is it possible that there'd still be some need, maybe? I know some districts are offering that as a short-term position initially, and I know there's, there's challenges to then, you know, finding someone to commit to the position and say, but if we go into full remote, that we wouldn't need you. So again, I'd have to work that through in terms of the contractual details with our attorney, but I think you raise a really good question about, about those positions. So I think I could work with the job description and work with the contractual agreement to set that up. I know a neighboring district that I think has set up something like, we're going to pay you for 20 days regardless of whether or not we're open for 20 days or not, and then after that, kind of reconsider, so, so yeah, I think there's a couple of different ways we could structure that to address that question.
Currently, the positions are listed as full-time?
They are, and we, we do have subs applying for the positions, we also have subs applying for the day-to-day positions, and I think we've talked about asking maybe some of the people applying for day-to-day if they'd be willing to commit to a longer, a longer term potentially. So what I would do is I'd bring that back to the board for kind of a final and formal approval, I know this happens with teaching positions, too, sometimes you're approving something almost after the fact, given that we start the school year, so we could set up a short-term agreement initially with the idea of being of, maybe morphing it into a longer-term agreement, if there's a need for that. I think for us, I think for the, the district team right now, it's just some assurance that we have some staff members that have some familiarity with the district and even familiarity with the different schools and grade levels, kind of at the ready.
And in regards to the kindergarten staffing question, you're looking to add additional sections, but do we have a ballpark on, on how many we're looking at?
So I do have that, I'm just looking at a different spot, but what I was, what we were able to do is do that with all, all within our current staff, so there's no staff recommendation increase for that right now. So it looks like we will have three sections of hybrid kindergarten, two sections of hybrid kindergarten at Blythe, three sections of hybrid kindergarten at Central, and one section at Hollywood, and those, again, with a maximum class size of 15. And then we believe we need four sections of remote academy kindergarten, and we actually have one of our, potentially one of the first-grade teachers, because we had two sections of first-grade over at Blythe, who might be able to make that modification, only needing the one section at Hollywood, the Hollywood kindergarten teacher is employed full-time, which he's done the kite intervention program other years, so we would make that an additional remote kindergarten section, and then another first-grade teacher at Hollywood, potentially, who only has one section. So again, we're able to work within the, the current staffing. I just wanted to point that out, because I know that was, kindergarten became kind of its own unique consideration, and that when we went to a half-day plan for everybody, we didn't want to go to a quarter of a day for the kindergarten students, that's really barely worth coming in, so really keeping them on that same half-day schedule, just needing them to have more sections. But really, no additional board action needed on that, it's really just sharing that as an informational piece.
Any further questions?
No, just to support Martha, the rest of the presentation.
Adjusting to, sorry, adjusting to our new learning style, but April was about to say something about the permanent substitutes, or it looked like you were ready to.
You want, do you want her to explain how subbing might work at Hauser?
Yes, please, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
So at Hauser, we do have some flexibility, or this is how we have taken care of some sub shortages in the past. Our teachers, when their plan period, they would give up their plan period to internal sub, so we have done that in the past to try to make up for some shortages. Having a permanent sub would just allow for, it would allow for them to continue to have their plan. We're lucky that we have that, I don't believe that elementary schools, not an elementary principal, but they don't have that flexibility typically that we have to cover shortages when we do have somebody out. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Was there any thought given to providing perhaps two subs at Hauser and maybe sharing one between Blythe and Hollywood, or not?
I think it's possible that we may ask somebody to travel or to even shift assignments. Again, it really, it's been very hard to predict this one, but if we went with, let's say, more internal subbing, internal subbing has actually often been kind of, and April correctly, kind of popular at, at Hauser, right? It's a way to make some additional money for the students and for the staff, I think it's great because it's.
They're very.
Staff members are familiar, yeah. But again, is that going to be different in the, in the COVID times, and, and we don't know that for sure, and so I think having the flexibility of having these additional positions is valuable.
The schedule that we are putting together will still allow for that internal subbing, it's just gonna be a little more difficult because they're gonna have to be doing that through Zoom and Google Classroom, so I, I'm not sure if we'll have the same number of people willing to do that under these times. I would say if we were gonna share a sub, it would make more sense to do that with Central because of the ease of going back and forth between the times and not have to have that travel period.
Oh, that's fair, thank you.
Can I, can I just clarify, so you wouldn't have the internal subbing for an in-person? It would be a Zoom sub?
No, you would still need someone, so.
But I mean, for our staff, no. Someone that you hired as a permanent sub? Would you be asking our staff to sub between hybrid classrooms?
Yes, so we would still have that, just like we would any other time that, let's say, if I'm going to be absent in my first hour math class, if I'm, if I'm at home, let's say I had some, you know, I was, had a sniffly nose, I didn't know what it was for, if I'm feeling well enough, I could continue and teach that class, I would just need an adult to be in the classroom to supervise the children, to make sure that they're following expectations, but the teacher could still lead. But if a teacher was not going to be able to carry on that teaching, then one of our internal subs, one of our teachers would make sense, hopefully another math teacher would go ahead and take over that teaching of that day in person, as well as, we're a little different at Hauser, because the, the teaching goes on with the in-person and the remote kids all together.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, are you increasing the exposure for our staff if they're traveling too much between different groups of children that they're not usually with?
And again, when we do that, we call it an APB, we put it on an APB when we know that we have a, a staff member out, and it's by choice. So it would be a staff member's choice to do that, and I know, you know, some of our staff members are, have already, through surveys, said they feel comfortable going from room to room, as long as they're following the safety precautions. Those who don't feel like they're safe doing that, they would probably just not sign up for that.
Yeah, I know, I, I've subbed many times for, like, math at different places, but it's, it's different if it's a different group of children.
If we did have an internal sub that was assigned to our schools, each of us, then it would make it so that that is someone who's trained in Zoom and Google Classroom, and that could very easily go in and out.
We've been making an effort in for permanent subs to have multiple discipline expertise. I know it's hard to find a perfect person.
Yeah, at this point, we would be looking for someone who could carry on, you know, some basic sub lessons, just like we do in, in, you know, typical subs, they just have to have a sub certificate, we would look for someone, obviously, that was very well qualified.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions?
So this was on the consent agenda for approval, but it sounded like you were looking more for direction.
Yes.
And formal approval, so is there, is there an action that we need to take other than?
There's really not, I guess that the board did not want me to proceed with this, because the approval would come from an actual approval of a person in that position, or an approval of those stipends for their remote learning coaching.
Okay.
If you're comfortable leaving it to that, I mean, I know that it becomes, it's sort of at a point where it's done, right? We're making recommendations for a specific individual in any of those positions?
It's probably a matter, it's probably a matter of degree, you know, how many are we talking? So if we could follow up to give us an idea of how many people we're talking about?
Right, absolutely.
Obviously, we need people, it's just a matter of how many?
Yeah, I would say the same thing. I wouldn't want 50 stipends out there, but, you know.
Right, I think I said in, in the notes here, what did I, I think I did say it? We talked about also maybe one per building, or like three, three to six for, for the district, I have to, I have to look at my own notes, we've been back and forth on the, the best way to do this. We also may see what the level of staff interest is, that could also drive this a bit, if there's not as much staff interest as we're anticipating or predicting.
It says five in the memo.
Thank you.
Targeted five with three to five hours a week.
Yeah. Font's very small in the new board format, I have to really.
The font is very small.
I found how to zoom in, but, yeah.
Would it make sense from a dollars and cents basis then to have an idea about the stipends for other positions we're not filling or not using this year, weighing that against what we decide for this?
Sure, we can bring that forward, I know that is something, and I know we have members of the REC here, we always have a stipend committee process, we have a very formal process for reviewing new stipends, then bringing them to the board for approval, and that really did not happen this year, just because we were in the, in the midst of the pandemic, we had canceled. As you know, last year, all stipend activities were essentially ceased, but the staff members were all paid for that. And then this summer, we made a determination that because there were so many unknowns, that stipend positions would not be automatically paid, and that special consideration would need to be given to stipend positions for approval. So absolutely, I think that's probably a good thing for us to bring to you at the September board meeting, is kind of a updated stipend list, and then we could, you would be able to see then from that, kind of the, the side-by-side comparison of what's not being paid, at least for the foreseeable future, I mean, depends on the day, there's days when I still think maybe we get to have a spring sports season or something, but we'll, we'll see.
There is a stipend list as part of Jim's budget presentation, and total stipends for the year come to 271,000, and I can say right now that just basketball, and I'm only picking on basketball because it's easy to see, comes out to something like $10,000, so. It looks like a wash, or better.
Okay, anything else? Well, I was gonna make a motion to approve, but I think you saved me from that. All right, so shall we move on to the next item?
Yes.
Okay, next item is the Riverside Education Council.
Good evening. We appreciate the Board of Education taking the time to hear the perspective of the District 96 Riverside Education Council. Two weeks ago, Mrs. Murphy was kind enough to take time out of her day and meet with us to discuss a survey we had sent to our membership regarding the District 96 Return to Learn Plan. The timing of this survey allowed all staff to be made aware of the plans that were to be presented at the Board of Education meeting. At that time, approximately 76% of our membership responded to the survey, and they were quite divided on returning to in-person learning, with a. divided on returning to in-person learning, with approximately 48% in favor of returning to in-person and the other 52% not in favor. At that time, we shared with Mrs. Murphy some of the concerns of the staff, and she conveyed details of this conversation to the other members of the board. As we know during these difficult times, people's feelings and perspectives change. These changes are influenced by virus data, both in the District 96 community, as well as in the community staff members reside, the closing of other educational institutions, situations in our own households and districts, and other factors. Recognizing this, we felt it was important to survey our staff again. Our surveys were sent to members approximately two weeks apart. This allowed them time to better understand the district plans and also continue to monitor the virus as it affects the area surrounding District 96. In the most recent survey, nearly 98% of our membership responded. At present, a majority of the REC members believe we should begin the year remotely. Of the responses, 37.7% of REC members currently favor the year with in-person learning, and 60.2% are not in favor of beginning the year with in-person and believe we should begin the year fully remote. 2.1% of our members responded that they intend to take a leave of absence. Of those respondents, 27.2% or 52 people were previously in favor of beginning the year with in-person learning and now believe we should begin the year fully remote.
On behalf of the members of the Riverside Education Council, we would like to share information, not only from those who changed their minds, but other members as well. These are some of the concerns that were shared by many. The metrics in the immediate area and throughout our region have been increasing. Martha previously shared, as of the data reported on August 19th, the Illinois Department of Public Health website indicates that suburban Cook County, Region 10, has seen four days of positivity increases, and the test positivity rate is at 6.4%. Our Return to Learn Plan has been carefully crafted to seamlessly pivot from hybrid to remote, should that be necessary. There are questions related to the metrics District 96 will be using to determine when we will pivot from hybrid to remote and back again when the opportunity comes. This evening, Martha shared with us that we'll be following the Illinois Department of Public Health 8% guideline. With these metrics in place, staff can better prepare to make the transition between in-person hybrid learning and remote learning as seamless as possible for students. In our ever-changing world and as new guidelines continue to be introduced, from Illinois Department of Public Health and ISBE, new questions, new questions for health and safety arise. Members have many unanswered questions about health and safety procedures. One additional concern we'd like to share goes along with health and safety. Whether it be rotating classrooms to work with students or working as a substitute teacher, there is a concern regarding the increased exposure for students and staff members. With the Illinois Department of Public Health exclusion guidance issued on August 17th, any individual exhibiting any symptoms of COVID-19 should be sent home or denied entry to the building. This requirement could yield increased exposure for students and staff as teachers move from different locations to work as substitutes. We do thank the board for their consideration of the addition of permanent subs within our district, yet the concern of exposure remains. Multiple teachers have shared positive feedback regarding the return to learn plans developed by the COVID transition team and the administration, as they are thoughtful and accommodating. Our administration and staff has worked tirelessly to safely and effectively welcome our students back into our buildings. These tireless efforts include numerous hours of planning and problem-solving on the part of teachers and staff. As educators, we will do anything to maintain a nurturing environment where we challenge our students to reach their highest potential. Thank you for listening to the thoughts and concerns of the members of the Riverside Education Council. We appreciate your time this evening and look forward to continuing conversations with the Board of Education and the administration regarding our 2020-2021 Return to Learn Plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are the committee reports. And first one on the list is Finance Committee.
The auditor, I spoke to the auditor on Monday. They're currently doing their annual audit, and as part of that, they ask a board member several questions about, you know, any concerns. So I think they'll be wrapping that up shortly, and we'll be getting the report, I believe, in October, I think is the usual time. Is that right, Mr. Kevin?
Right, you should be on time.
I think they're going to be having their final meeting sometime, I don't know, they said they'd contact me, so if anyone has any concerns regarding, you know, any auditing issues, let me know, and I'll make sure to raise that during that meeting. Nothing else to report.
Next, we will move on to Facilities Committee. Joe?
Martha noted the current mission of the Finance Committee with regards to the Hauser, this room's light and sound, as well as the other item.
Light parking lot.
Light park, parking lot. We are going to be meeting on September 10th.
Next is the Education Committee. Sherry?
As most everyone knows, and maybe we don't have everyone who's ready, but we provided a, the administration provided a substantial overview or Return to Learn reopening plan. Please continue to check that. I know our superintendent also would like our families to also check the website for the new health guidelines and the IDPH. It's not easy to just talk about them over the phone casually. They're very detailed, and I think this is part of why I was concerned the last time, just because it is a rigorous, difficult notion to Return to Learn, so I would encourage everyone to read those. I would also just like to continue to ask the board personally if we could continue to get guidance from our nursing staff. I know we heard from one nurse that was concerned and asked for reconsideration of the plan based on its uncertain nature and our metrics increasing, so something for, I'd like to see the Education Committee do to add to our plan. But please read the plan. It's very, very detailed, and the staff did spend many, many hours with the transition team developing how we're going to get kiddos back in the building, and I hope we can do it safely, just a matter of when.
Thank you for that. Okay, next is the Personnel Committee.
So between the last meeting and this meeting, the topic that we just kicked around with subs and interim and stipends and everything had popped up, and so we talked about that a little bit before this meeting to prepare for it, or help, I guess, prepare for it. And as of right now, nothing else is on there, but I am sure something else will come up at some point.
And then next is Policy Committee.
Well, I have my own section, but there's one thing I just want to point out, that there is a new, there is a policy that we did add to this week's agenda, given the residency requirements. So I wanted to discuss that. It's under, need an additional discussion, so we're not going to vote on to approve it. I just, we're talking about making some changes to it.
All right. Noted for later. All right. And so the next item on the agenda is Old Business. The first item is the approval of the HCA lease, consideration and approval with Hollywood Citizens Association for Green Space and Play Area. Is there a motion to approve the HCA lease consideration and approval with Hollywood Citizens Association for Green Space and Play Area?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? For this long, there's got to be discussions.
Yeah, well.
This has been a long discussed and long desired item, to have additional property or access to property at Hollywood. The negotiations and the discussions were never all that easy. We do finally have a lease in front of us that I believe we should sign, but it was a hard discussion, and it didn't always go the way it could have, and I think we would have liked to see a little bit more openness and collaboration from HCA, but we do have a lease that was signed, and so I would like to see us vote in favor of it.
It has definitely been a long process, and I mean, I really, I'm glad that, I mean, I really want to expand the school at Hollywood and provide the students and teachers a better academic environment and to provide the students and community with new playground. This lease provides for that, but it costs far greater than a dollar a year. People may feel that the HCA is being magnanimous and agreeing to this lease. However, the HCA is receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxpayers' money. The benefits that will be made to the leased land will equally benefit the HCA and the school by providing the HCA an improved driveway, better parking, and a playground for their renters. In addition, the district will be paying thousands of dollars to maintain these items for the school and the HCA. One would expect the risk and partnership to be equal when one side is benefiting by only paying a dollar a year and the other side is benefiting with hundreds of thousands of dollars in improvements. However, it concerns me how one-sided this lease agreement is. For example, every lease has an indemnification clause, which essentially protects each party due to X by another party. This lease agreement provides far more protection to the HCA than it does to the district. The HCA demanded that we indemnify them against all claims, regardless of the reasons. However, the HCA will only indemnify the district due to, quote, negligence and willful misconduct. This concerns me, for it takes only one party where alcohol is served and renters drink too much. It takes only one child from climbing up the HCA to jump off the roof only to hurt themselves, which, mind you, I don't know about hurting themselves, but kids do climb up on that roof to jump off. The HCA should protect the district for all claims, regardless of the reason. Secondly, the lease requires the district to maintain the leased property, which the district, of course, will do. But when asked, when we asked the HCA to maintain their property in the lease, they categorically refused. Now granted, we can file complaints with the village of Brookfield if they don't maintain their property, or we can try to get the community to pressure the HCA to maintain their property, but that is not how we should operate. Without some sort of clause that requires the HCA to maintain their property, children at Hollywood could run the risk of injury should the property not be maintained. By signing this lease, we are implicitly saying it is okay if the HCA does not maintain their property. Lastly, the HCA will never offer this district the opportunity to purchase a property if they should ever decide to sell. We asked the HCA, if they ever decide to sell, if they'd give us that opportunity, and they emphatically said no. The HCA's refusal to offer the district the opportunity to purchase a property if they are ever to sell only solidifies that they are using district, the district monies to improve their property at taxpayer expense. A good partnership is based on equality, but this lease is not equal. In addition, the HCA's demands are not actions of a good partner. A good partner does not completely rewrite the lease after an agreement which was reached, which the HCA did last December. By signing this lease, the district will assume an unequal amount of risk without having an equal amount of say, and that jeopardizes the resources needed for Hollywood, children, and the children throughout the district. So I don't think we should be signing this lease.
Any further comment?
Dan, does it make sense? I don't know if the public is not aware necessarily of the terms of the lease, or maybe it's good to remind them of the major pieces, just briefly, that, you know, the term and the rent and so forth. If you can do that.
Okay.
We are, it will be released publicly if we sign this, though, right?
Right.
Yeah, so everybody can, yeah.
We'll post it to our website if it was to be, if it's to be approved.
Well, so then, I don't know, perhaps I should not read from it then if it's?
I think you can share the.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying read the entire of the lease, but just like, or maybe, maybe Martha can just summarize just the main bits, so if someone wants to know, you know, the term and the.
Well, the term, yeah, that's a very good point. So the term is for a lease agreement for 30 years, and this is for green space on the, is it the?
West side.
West side, that was what I was going to say. West side of the property that is adjacent between Hollywood School and HCA property, and that's, again, for 30 years for a dollar a year. And yes, there are significant other addendums to it in terms of, as Dave was mentioning, in terms of liability and upkeep and the like. Thanks for that suggestion.
So I guess for me personally, I agree with everything Dave, well, with the main points that Dave pointed out that are not in there that I would have personally liked to see in there as well, just to make it a little bit more balanced out. But over the course of the several months that we've been discussing this, I've come to the side that I'd rather have the playground with what we do have in there. The insurance clause still requires them to carry insurance, and we will get certificates of that insurance being in place. So as much as the contract might say that certain things are going to be pushed back on us, it's just not how the law or the insurance would actually come into play with certain things, although you never know what's going to happen, and sometimes you need a loss to happen to figure out who's actually responsible for and everything. So we do have some risk there for sure. But I think despite that, this is generally acceptable enough for us to actually get the playground and move forward with what we need for the kids at Hollywood and the community and what the community has been asking us to do. So it's not perfect. I would have liked, just like the indemnity thing, to be a little bit stronger in there. It really, to me, does not seem like that big of an ask to reciprocate on that, but it was something that they would not back down on, and the, trying to think what the other item. I didn't hear, the, what was that? Maintenance? Yeah, the maintenance, yeah, agreeing on the maintenance, selling, the first fight, first right of refusal. That would also, to me, just seem like, I mean, that, there's not been much there. If you're, if you're planning on selling it, why not just sell to us? That was kind of a, an irritant to me, but, you know, not something enough to kill the deal. But, so overall, I'm in favor of it, but there were a couple similar sticking points that I had that I would have liked to see, which is part of the reason this took so long to put together as well.
Well, I'm just going to say, I understand what both of you are saying and agree with many of it, or much of it, but I would like to say that I think it's a very exciting foundational step for a really great addition to the Hollywood community, where it's going to be building a playground, making changes to the school, which I think are going to be just, just a big value add for us. So I, while I understand your frustration, I'm very excited to approve the lease myself so that we can move forward and create a better, like a really great addition to the community.
And we've already got the footprint for the playground design, so.
Right.
We just need the space to put it.
Most definitely. Thank you for bringing the light back into that side of the agreement. That is very good to bring up, most definitely. Any other comments? I agree with much everything that's been said tonight as well, most definitely. This is a great, it's an imperfect agreement, which is definitely why it took so long to hammer out. There are some concerns on our side, but there were some irritants, as I think was mentioned, that seemed to draw things out much longer than they should, but I do think it, overall, it's a, it is a very positive agreement and a great agreement to have, and opens up so many possibilities for Hollywood School. It's definitely something to look forward to, and it is a great thing. I definitely am in favor of signing the lease. All right. If there is no further discussion, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Marhol?
Yes.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
No.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes.
Are there any balloons?
I just have stations.
I don't know if that's Gonzo back there at the, yeah, with the mask on at the back of the auditorium, so thank you for joining us tonight.
Once again, what if they have a ribbon cutting or something?
Yeah.
Next item on. Okay, next item on the agenda is the, is the, I'm sorry?
Oh.
Oh, yes. All right, so next item on the agenda is the budget for 2020-2021 as presented. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the 2020-2021 legal budget as presented?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Jim?
The budget that you'll be voting on hasn't changed since we agreed it last month. We show an operating surplus of $1.1 million, and that'll go towards paying down our debt certificates. It's a conservative budget with revenue reduced from the previous year and expenditures shown as a high increase, and then it includes $140,000 to pay for COVID-related expenditures. It's a flexible budget. We have 6.8 FTE on hold with $419,000 associated with that. And we're currently, excuse me, we're currently considering hiring five full-time subs that would cost about $290,000 out of that $419. So in summary, it's, this budget pays down our debt, it's balanced, it's conservative, and it's flexible for going into an unusual year, very unusual. Any questions?
Thank you. You've had a difficult year to deal with, I appreciate explaining all the changes.
Thanks for trying to predict everything we can.
Yeah, good luck.
We need some crystal balls in this district right now.
I just want to ask, I think all the documents you prepared along the way were incredibly local.
Yes.
I really appreciate it. I love the additions you made, highlighting places that should, you know, I felt like things that were red, I think it was, you know, it was very easy to go through that long document with your additions, so thank you.
Thank you.
I definitely agree. The, it took us a long way each, each step. It makes it a lot fewer questions today, I believe, as a result of that.
Yep.
Okay, any further questions or discussion?
Jim, you noted that there was approximately $400,000 for COVID-related costs. Do you think that's likely?
There's, the $419 was for the positions that we haven't posted. So as far as COVID-related expenses, we're figuring about $140,000 for the supplies, and mostly that will come from the CARES grant. So that's what we're, it probably will be more or less, but that's what the government's given us for that.
The $400 was for some of the people that have left that we haven't replaced yet.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I misread and I misheard.
Which might go into some of the substitute teachers and things like that that we can just repurpose.
Right.
And Martha and Jim, I know we don't have access to testing for staff and our students, but if that should ever arise, I know FDA approval was given to, you know, City of Illinois' saliva test in Yale's, but if it ever happens, I would like, I personally would appreciate some budget set aside for testing if it ever comes available as soon as we can get it. Thanks.
And I'll just add a, add a comment to that.
It may not be available for months, I have no idea. But why not plan for that provision?
I do, I'll just add a side comment on that, and perhaps I should have shared before. So I think people are familiar that District 102 is looking at some testing procedures, and I did talk to the superintendent there, and he said, you know, give me a week or two or three, and he said if we got this set up, we would definitely be interested in a collaboration with other districts.
That's amazing.
Because there are some initial setup costs as well as some laboratory costs, and if we could, again, you know, collaborate with them to access that same testing option. So what we know, and I know our board's well familiar, but it does provide that opportunity when we talk about the child with the runny nose who might need to go home, or the staff member with the runny nose who might need to go home, instead be able to offer a rapid test of some sort would mean that if we can demonstrate that it is not COVID, it could really change the consistency of staff being able to stay at work and children being able to stay in school. So it is an exciting development, it's, you know, it's frustrating that it's not developing quite fast enough for us, but I think we're getting closer and closer, so it's something that we are definitely keeping a close eye on.
Thank you for, I know we've talked about this pandemic committee, but not everyone is privy to those conversations, but the testing for saliva testing, the cost is significantly diminished compared to traditional testing, and the results will be much faster, so I'm hope, I really would be so excited if we could get access, and I know that's not under your personal control, but I thank you for looking into it.
Absolutely.
So I would guess, though, the idea is that we really don't have a ballpark cost estimate, which would probably lead, lead to why we don't have a budget for it.
Right. I mean, I think there's an idea of it's dollars per student or dollars per staff, and that I think approximately three, but what we also know is there was a fair amount of setup costs for the other districts, so how they would turn those costs back to us and how frequently we would use it are still open-ended questions.
University of Illinois is currently using it for their incoming students and staff, so you could probably get information, but they have on-site labs, so it's a different scenario, but, yeah, but thanks for looking into it.
Most definitely. Any further questions for Jim? All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mrs. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Yes.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, next item on the agenda is the modified 2021 school calendar. Is there a motion for the board to approve the calendar modifications that include two remote learning planning days and the change of the first day of student attendance to Wednesday, September 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Martha, did you have something to speak on this?
So I shared a little bit of this at the superintendent's report. This would give us just that additional day of planning, which we think would be very valuable for our staff. So again, a relatively minor change. We know that changing the first day of school is a really big deal in any community, and yet we also know the unusual nature of this school year, that I, my hunch, his parents didn't take the day off just for the first day of school, that parents have had to adjust their work schedule all along the way. So hopefully this wouldn't be a significant inconvenience to the community. It would certainly give our staff members some more time for professional development and learning that we think can really just enhance the plan for the school year.
Can you reiterate the last day of school? I believe you're going to say, is that correct?
Right, I think it shifts by one day. I have to open that back up there, but...
But we'd already, yeah, we already shifted one because of the...
I think you're, I think the last memo said that it actually does not change to the last.
Right, that's what I read, but no, I was just thinking we already shifted it once just for the election day, and then it shifted to the...
Yeah, so we're proposed to submit that calendar to the state. I know Kathy worked on that with Angela, so I think we're, we're all set, that that doesn't change to the last day. Thank you.
So we're, we're still good with June 10th and Thursday, June 10th?
And that's including those five emergency days.
Right.
Yeah, I had a question regarding those emergency days, given that we have, like, the remote academy and we have, like, the hybrid option. What happens if there's an emergency day in this case, like, let's say it was like the actual snow day, if we hadn't had a mild. Let's say we had, like, they didn't go to school, how would that affect the Roman Academy? Would they still be in the same schedule then, ending at the same?
One of the things we have talked about, that's a very big question, David, and I cannot... Now, I was...
Give him the crystal ball.
Yeah, if in all seriousness, you know, we had talked about the e-learning days. Remember, we had planned a period for maybe two snow days, and then instead we were in the midst of a pandemic? That it's likely that everybody, we would go to a remote learning, e-learning day, and it would still count as a day of attendance. If I had to predict, I think that would be the very likely approach, rather than taking a day off, you know, a day of no schooling and a, a day that would need to be made up.
I think an emergency day now would be like a power outage. Yeah. That would be an emergency day.
No internet.
Right, that's a good point, yeah.
Where internet service is how, like, after a storm recently, and people lost power, that would produce an emergency day.
Yeah, I was on the follow-up for two days.
Snow days are becoming a thing.
The five e-learning days was, is a permanent thing, right? It wasn't just a one...
Well, the state lifted all their requirements so that the schools could move into the remote learning. If you recall, it was a very specific process for the board to approve the e-learning days, and we had approved two, but not five, if I recall. And then everything changed, and we went to the all-remote learning, and so they kind of lifted all of those requirements, and I think we would act within this idea of remote learning, and we would just have everybody stay, it would almost be like stay home and do your learning at home today approach. Again, unless it was such that there was no power and we didn't think kids could do remote learning, we should take it as a day of non-instruction. My hunch is that the calendar guidance is very, I don't know if vague is the right word, but there's just been a lot, because everybody's changing their calendars because they've given this allowance to have these remote learning planning days that can count as a day of student instruction. The requirement to take election day as a holiday, again, the shifts and changes have been very significant, and we've essentially been told that our calendar is approved and that the, the state will be flexible with people and their approaches to the calendar right now.
I think the suggestion to move another day for some additional support for our teachers is absolutely makes sense for what we're asking them to do, I think, to give them one more day to prepare is not, not too much to, to ask from, from the community to give them one more day to let their kids get back in class.
That's what they consider as reopening procedures.
Right, and that, you know, that is the, if you see the design, it's there in the institute day agenda, this idea that we kind of go from district-wide to building, building-specific, classroom-specific, and we know, I think actually Chris Harvales is just here with his computer, I think he's working on videos for students on how to enter the building and have their temperatures checked and all of that. There's just a lot of protocol and a lot of procedure to be worked through, and having that additional day will help with that also.
Okay, anything further? Any further comments? Should note, though, when we're talking about basically a lack of snow days, Jeff, I think you predicted that last year.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
No more sledding or snowmen building.
That's right.
Oh, wow. All right.
We were just at, like, early March and said, wow, I think we made it through the winter without, and it takes snow days instead of pandemic, so we won't be happy for no snow days again.
Yes. All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Okay, Mrs. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay. Next up is the Press Plus 103 Update Memo, second reading and approval. Take her away, Dave.
I didn't mean to giggle, but it's so...
Let's see, I guess we need to move it first, though, don't we?
It's a fanfare for this one.
So let's see, is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the Press Plus 103 policies as presented? So, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, there's a, I guess we broke it into a couple of sections, but there's a couple of questions on here that we need to answer. And I think, I don't know if you've had a, how, but I'm pretty much, if you took a look at them and I wanted to discuss it, I'd pretty much go with what they're recommending with the default answers. Specifically, there is one, I mean, there's one, there's a policy two, colon one-two-five, it was requiring expenses for travel, which I know we all do quite so much here, but they did say basically, do we want baggage fees, do we get receipts for baggage fees? And the default is yes, and I agree with that.
Does anyone make it clear on my five-plus years of board, I've never traveled or...
Never.
I guess I know, I think this is a non-issue, and we can just go with the default.
I don't think we need it personally. When does anyone actually use it, and is it that big of a deal? I don't know. The rest you want, I mean, you can...
I fly Southwest with bags, like, but, yes, I've never had bags or traveled at the expense of the district either.
And I do understand that if that situation arose, that we were traveling, I can't imagine that ever happening. Sure, I would think baggage fees would be compensated. Neither the default makes sense, but I don't think this is even a...
No.
But then the policy, there is also on the flip side, there's also a policy, and therefore staff who travel.
Right.
Yeah.
And that would do the same thing, I would say.
Yeah, I think that's a slightly different issue, though.
I, in, in, you know, private sector, in times that I've had to fly other airlines to charge baggage fees for, for work, the bags are, are covered, so, yeah, that does the same way.
That's what I was saying, let's just go with the default, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just don't, it's not going to come up with the board, but, yeah, the staff would use it more than we, whatever use it.
As it should be, definitely.
But overall, the more difficult ones are at the bottom here, but overall, there's really, most of the changes are pretty minor, not footnote changes, just sort of grammatical changes.
All right, well, so has the discussion here been good enough to satisfy answering those questions?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, I guess, what, we have two more of these, two more rounds of these?
Well, do we, we need to approve 104 and then, or, I mean, sorry, 103 and then go to 104?
Okay.
I thought it was broken in, right? Yeah.
All right, well, so this is for 103. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mrs. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Okay, 103 passes.
Okay. And next up is Press Plus 104 Update Memo, second reading and approval. Is there a motion to approve the Press Plus 104 Update Memo, second reading?
Second.
All right, let's have some more good discussion.
Okay, so this, there's a little bit more, I guess it's a little bit more, this one's a little bit more challenging. There's a policy in here specifically seven, colon, one-ninety regarding student behavior, and there's been a lot of discussions referring to restraints, and Martha and I have talked, I know Pam Shaw has done a lot of work on this, and so if it's, if it's all right, Pam, would you mind talking a little about this?
So ISBE last fall really started looking, because there were some concerns that were voiced to them about restraint and seclusion or isolated timeout. And a lot of this, as I've mentioned before, were instances that were happening in private day schools and some, some co-ops. And students who are in these schools, at times due to their special education needs, sometimes it's self-regulation, in order to not cause self-harm or in order to not harm others, the schools use some of these measures. This is something that we do not typically use here. It's just been, in thinking about this, I think it would be a good idea to have this language in our board policy, just in the event that a child was trying to, to self-harm, and out of the blue, something that we wouldn't be familiar with, with this child, and we needed to protect the child, that we have it in there just in the emergency situation that we would need to move into that. Isolated, isolated timeout rules is not something that we have. Public schools typically do not have those, per se, for the private institutions, but just thought it may be a good idea in the very remote chance that we would have to do this, that we would be able to, to put that into place. And of course, before any of those things are put into place, we look at restorative practices, we look at de-escalation techniques, which is training and behavior management skills, too, that staff has had. There is an increase in the eight hours, which LADZI is actually providing... There is an increase in the eight hours, which Ladsy is actually providing some training for any of the districts in the Ladsy Cooperative. And we're going to send psychologists and social workers, our behavior specialists, just so we have people on staff trained just in the rare, but we would need to use that. Any other questions or?
Well, so then to be clear, I guess what you're proposing is the default.
Yeah.
And it's also kind of a, it's an either/or in, so not just fiscal restraint, but also timeout and isolated timeouts. It's either approve all of those or exclude all of those.
Right, right.
I mean, I, I can tell you right now, I initially, when I was reading this, I initially had reservations with it, excepting the default. I mean, admittedly, I still do have reservations with it. However, the reasoning behind it, I mean, it does make sense. And I'm, I mean, I do think, well, we don't, we don't do it, we don't have, I haven't had the opportu, I mean, I haven't had a situation where it had to be used. I think it might be good to have. That does, still doesn't, doesn't alleviate the concerns that I have. Because I mean, I think right now we have good leadership, I feel we have a good board. And so I have no concerns about it, I'm just looking future.
If I could just share too, in my time that I had been here, we have not had to use this at all. And typically, a student who is displaying these behaviors, who have behavior in a bunch of plans, you've done a bunch of analysis of behavior before you've been writing the plan. And if a child is starting to escalate to the point where you're seeing more and more instances of concern, we look at labs and programs, or we look at a private day situation to support the child because the needs, the support that we can provide for.
And we are, I don't know what 105 ILCS da-da-da-da is, but I mean, there's clearly very specific protocols that are being referenced here, so it's not like an open.
Right, and some of the things with this new guidance was to, the state set up some more procedures for the private day schools who do use this as well too. As there's now a state form that has to be completed, it has to be submitted within, I think it was twenty-four, but they changed it to forty-eight hours. Parents will need to be informed immediately. I think those are some things that weren't happening in parts of the state that wanted, the state wanted, that put this into place.
Yeah, I remember when that first came out, it was just like a regular disciplinary type thing that a lot of places were using, so.
Yeah, there's been a lot of back and forth with this between ISBE and legal and policies since last fall. It's been a very long procedure where they project based on final documentation on this.
But in the event that we did have to use it, I mean, it's going to be well documented.
Oh, yeah, we have to date more.
With all, yeah, all the guy, yeah, everybody's going to know about it, okay.
And actually, just part of our behavior processes before, we've always documented if we saw children, just in general, students' behavior. And then looked at plans and how we can support students, so. But this is, would be a very rare, rare circumstance that I don't even foresee, but I just want it to be able to protect the district, it's a suggestion.
Yeah, if I might add, I've been on that behavior intervention program, just I see, you see maybe once or twice a year where we talk about these. But I have been impressed when I see you and the staff and the parents on that committee that you really do focus on de-escalation and those techniques that are, who are considering child first. So I do appreciate that this is not something that we usually ever engage in. And I appreciate your effort to, to really think about the whole child and just de-escalation of a situation.
Most definitely, that's what we want to do.
Okay, let's see, is there any other items to discuss or is that the only one?
It was the only one, I mean, there's other.
The only, there's a choice, excuse me.
Right, no, there's no more questions, that's the only one question.
Okay. All right, then, any further questions on 104?
No.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Okay, 104 passes.
So we passed it. Okay, and then the last policy I'd like to hear discussed is Press 104 Policies Needing Five-Year Annual Review.
I think you missed.
I just went. Did I?
Yeah.
103?
I was six, Press 103 Policies Needing Five-Year Review.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I apologize, okay. Then so, shall we discuss then the Press 103 Policies Needing Five-Year Review? Is there a motion to approve the Press 103 Policies Needing Five-Year Review?
So moved.
Second. These are pretty much as they say, five-year review, so.
There were anything, there are a couple of choices, do we need to update those? Or since it's a five-year review, they keep the same, or it looks like there's more baggage?
No, I don't think there was any choices with the five-year review.
No, I think it's the same as.
Right there.
There's things bouncing around on me.
They started saying that, I read them.
All right, you read them?
Payment, payment procedures, that list, with student rights and responsibilities, et cetera, yes?
Yep, before they're there.
Yes, yes.
All right. Well, is there any further discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mrs. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Yes.
And Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Okay, that one passes as well.
Okay, now we will go to the Press 104 Policies Needing Five-Year Review. Is there a motion to approve the Press 104 Policies Needing Five-Year Review?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is just one policy, need five-year review, again, no changes. Footnote changes pretty much.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay. If not, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead.
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Yes.
Mrs. Kleiber.
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, and so next, new business discussion, potential action.
Actually, this policy's needing additional discussion.
This thing keeps bouncing, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, policy's needing additional discussion.
So this is not an action item, but just wanted to call it attention to three policies here. First one is the board attorney. In the, in the policy, there is, they struck out essentially a clause saying that there would be, essentially saying the attorney should have no conflict of interest. And actually, I spoke with our attorneys, and that's, the reason they took it out is because that's attorneys, essentially, that's their, they have to abide by those rules to begin with, and that shouldn't be in a policy. I was uncomfortable with that, and so what we've asked is that, with an clause saying that, she wrote it here, stating that essentially, we will look for companies that adhere to that, adhere to that rule. I just didn't want to take that out completely. So we did, I did have to keep it in, but just change it slightly, okay? See, I guess, is there any questions on that?
No, and I'm glad that you continue to support that stringency for the attorney.
Thank you. And so the next one, the policy of three, colon, three, four, five, is the use of educational technologies. And this is a new one. I know Don has been doing a lot of work with SOPA. We're going to, we don't have to implement this until next year. And so we wanted to spend some more time looking at it, trying to align it with SOPA, make sure we have everything right. But if Don, I don't know, Don, if you have anything you want to say to that or if there's anything that I missed, but essentially, we just, it looks like one more time to look at this and look at this policy. Okay. The last policy is the residency policy. And I spoke with Martha on this one, and some districts are doing it. I mean, we, we know that we have a very tight residency policy here. And some districts have loosened that policy for teachers who might have daycare issues. And while we might only have maybe one or two at most, or any at all, we'd take advantage of this. But I would like to us to consider, and I'd like your opinions on relaxing the daycare, relaxing the residency rules very tightly. I mean, and when I say for like a very tight situation, such as basically the pandemic, specifically this year for COVID, and specifically only for teachers who are having daycare issues, and that they can come into possibly a hybrid option, would not be for the remote option, the remote academy, but for the hybrid option only, as long as it doesn't affect our, the residents, the students in the hybrid option. So essentially giving them the option to enroll their kids here for, like, for essentially the time that we have to, we're in this COVID situation. And I'd like everyone's thoughts on, I'd like your opinions on that.
What do you mean by as long as they don't affect the others who do?
So let's, let's say hypothetically, there's, there's a second grader in the hybrid class, there's, we've already set the cap at fifteen. And so if the hybrid class is at fifteen and there is no space for a second grader, they couldn't, we wouldn't displace another child because of that, or we wouldn't put another child in the remote option because of that. However, let's say the second grade only had ten in the hybrid option, and there was like five seats available, then we would get, that teacher could take, if they had a second grader there, could take that child for the second grade up, for the second grade. Now, I'm not saying this is going to go on indefinitely, I'm not saying we're doing this after COVID, I'm not saying we're even going to do this next year. I would like to just sort of make it very narrow so that we can accommodate our staff who have daycare issues, especially now during this time. Because I know so many schools are, there's a lot of schools that aren't going, don't have that remote option, or who, excuse me, don't have that hybrid option.
Do we have staff asking for that? Can you repeat if you said that right?
We've, we've had a very small number, as David mentioned, maybe this is one to two. It would be.
One or two.
Yeah, it would be a very unique case by case. But for us to even consider it would require modification of the residency policy.
Right.
So, and as David perfectly pointed out, this would be, we would put tight language around it due to the COVID-19 pandemic for the 2021 school year, specifically for the children of employees. I mean, it's, it's a really interesting question. It's certainly something that our attorney has shared that other school districts have contemplated, considered, and have made the modification to do. I don't expect that it would sort of open the floodgates. I've had some conversations with some staff members who have expressed some interest. And I think just even also as, as time goes on, too, families are finding other arrangements. We also know, we're talking about a childcare arrangement with Riverside and for field parks and recreation departments, that would be another option available to the children of employees. So it, it's, it's an interesting question that I felt was important to bring to the board for some discussion and consideration. Shelley Anderson, our attorney at Forensic, was quick to point out that essentially we are, by emergency, making an agreed-upon modification to the school code, right? So residency language and residency as the determination is to the children that a school district serves is a very significant part of how we, how public schools are set up in Illinois. So not something we would take lightly, but I, I think it's an interesting conversation and consideration, given everything going on right now.
I think the idea has a lot of merit. And while I generally don't believe that our job is to provide childcare, our job is to provide education, I think when we look at supporting our staff, who are our biggest asset in terms of providing education, it's worth considering.
I agree with that.
I think it goes back to write the language tightly enough so that it doesn't get abused. But in this environment, yes.
I agree with what Joel says, it's a very unusual time we're in. I think we're asking the teachers to come in and teach. And so I think in this difficult environment, so I think it makes absolute sense to accommodate them to the extent that we can, you know? Again, it has to be a tight language so that it doesn't go on indefinitely, but, you know, once the COVID's over, but I think in the current environment, I think it makes sense.
I agree.
Nothing further to add. Maybe, and if we do it, you know, maybe we just do this as a, review it again next year, especially if we have, let's do seven years here and everything, just.
Yeah, I think we, something about it.
Put it like a time, a time frame, an expiration date.
Yeah.
I, I do wonder though, in that, is some of the value of this, should we make this change? Is some of the value of this lost in that you have children who are being asked to make a transition one year and then a second transition the next year? Would it be more worthwhile or provide more value to staff for something that was, you know, once a child is in, that they stay in this district, or at least they have that option? And I know that's not what you're asking for, but I'm wondering if that becomes more valuable or more can help out a staffing situation?
You know, I mean, that, that's a good point, I mean, you bring up Dan, and I completely, I can sympathize with that. I guess my, my thought is that, that we're going to have to go, we'd have to look at that as, I mean, there is tuition that, I mean, if, like, if I had, if one of my siblings wanted to send their kids here, I mean, that'd be fine, as long as they pay tuition. And, I mean, this is, every decision, as we discussed last, in our last meeting, this whole, like, you do the remote academy, you do, you do the hybrid option, this is a very personal decision. And, I mean, I can tell you if I was, I mean, if I was a teacher and I had that opportunity, I wouldn't take it lightly because I would worry about the transition, so for my kid. But it's just, this is a very unique time, and, well, I, I don't know if I'm necessarily open to that, making accommodations beyond, beyond COVID. I would definitely like to make accommodations now.
I have a certain amount of sympathy towards what Dan said, but, and that was my first thought too, was the transitions for the child. But I think keep it to COVID-related and specific to the current situation where childcare and where one is working is so important right now.
Well, don't get me, don't get me wrong, I'm not necessarily advocating it though, but I, I'm, I'm wondering though, Martha, if you're able to answer that question?
So, you know, it's interesting, the conversations I've had with just a few staff members, that is something that they are well aware of, that as much as it would solve an immediate problem for them potentially, it might create more long-term problems. I also think staff members who've considered have also been, well, if I could find another option, do I really want my child here? I mean, there, it's not, it's not a perfect solution. I think it's, it is interesting to open the door for that to be an option. And then I think families would have to make those personal decisions, like, do I want to set my child up for a transition and then another transition? We know going from one, what would be a new school, right? And then another new school a year from now. So the more open-ended timeframe is, is interesting. Real honestly, I had not even considered it because I feel like it's such a unique exception to be making. I hadn't really thought about a proposed longer-term exception. You know, again, hearing from, just a little bit of conversation tonight, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I honestly don't know. It's, you know, we could certainly go back to the families that want to contemplate it. And if they said, you know, I'd love to do it, but I, one year is very hard on my child, you know, to finish an elementary or a middle school situation would make it a different consideration. I, I just don't have that information.
I'm very concerned about the precedent that longer term would set up. It, it becomes a taxpayer issue, it becomes people trying to game the system. I'd rather see language that's pretty tight right now. And if we want to seriously consider this for long-term, I think this is, it's a different discussion.
Yeah, I guess I would like to see implications about long-term class sizes as well. Class sizes appear very small when you have half of them remote or however many. Class sizes appear very small when you have half of them remote, or however many, 30% remote, but that would definitely change if you left. It depends if it's one person versus is it 20 people? As it is, we have class size issues, so we need to look at that. Now, I, a student taught in a high school, and there was a daycare there where the students took a class to learn how to take care of young children. And that's a different scenario, but I really haven't experienced one that has staff as students. So I think, yeah, I'd need to really think about this in many different aspects because there's a lot to consider, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think I had, we had a conversation about this, I believe, at our COVID-19 transition team, just as we, we talked about, we know childcare is not typically the problem we try to solve for our staff, but just given the extreme situations that COVID has presented, and I will tell you, a couple of staff members chuckled and said, oh, my goodness, no, I never want my own child here. You know, meaning just from a, yes, it's a wonderful school district, but being a parent and a teacher educator in the same district with your child can certainly present challenges, too. So again, I don't, I don't think it's something that is widely needed or requested. I think it's some very unique requests. And I, again, I don't think it would be over, overused from what I can predict based on having had some conversations. I, I do think it's, it's very compassionate for the board to consider it, so I appreciate
Well, it was, it's listed, these two are listed as potential action items? Are we looking to act on these?
So, so I guess just the issue, like, so many of these things related to COVID-19 are timing issues. So for me to work with staff who might want to consider it, given that our first day of school is going to occur before our next board meeting, you know, we have committee the whole on the same day as, no.
Yeah.
So we're, we're a little off in our timing. So again, if the, if the board was comfortable, and I realize this is policy, I mean, this is a key action of the board, makes me a little uncomfortable to even ask. But if the board is comfortable with this idea of, yes, given the right language, worked with our attorney, that we would agree with, that's something that I could pursue. Because otherwise, I could, you know, families would sort of be left in a, in an odd kind of gap between, you know, the next board meeting and when school's actually starting here. So I guess the board could direct me to make modifications to the policy. The policy would be approved at a later date, but by directing me, you would also allow me to work with staff members who might find that a need or an interest.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, we should probably do that. Go ahead, Wes.
Martha, I'd like you to do that and then forward that language so that we have an opportunity to think about it and get back to you with any, on an individual basis with any concerns.
Tell us, move it up first.
You changed his name.
No, I would do, I would. Or I guess you already said your piece, didn't you? Yeah, I would be in favor of some tight language and, and also just understanding how many, I mean, right now, it's maybe one person. If it ended up, if this discussion causes 10 or 15 people, I think I might feel differently about it. But something for like a right now, short-term, one year, I think it's kind of, here it is, you make the decision with all the other stuff that we've been talking about. It's, it's a personal choice as to whether you want to do it. I think we don't have a high school in our district either, so, I mean, if you got a first grader and we're extending long-term through eighth grade, you're going to have to transition back to high school anyway. So that's a whole nother conversation. But I think the short-term tight language for a small number of people, that doesn't screw up everything that we've tried to put in place, like with class sizes and all that kind of stuff, I'd be generally okay with that.
Yeah, I'm going to need some serious language review, so more detailed person.
As I said earlier, yes, I am in favor with the restrictions that other people have mentioned tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Martha, I guess you are so directed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, then next is the new business discussion, also potential action item. Consideration of an agreement with the Village of Riverside and the Village of Brookfield regarding childcare services at the school districts, at school district schools.
Right, and this is another interesting, oh, do you want me to talk about this already? Do you want me to jump right in? Sorry.
Sure. Well, yeah, I guess we really need to know about it before we can decide if we're voting.
Sure. So we have, as you know, IGA with Riverside Parks and Recreation to provide before and after care in our schools. It's a, it's a formally agreed upon IGA from, I believe, 2016 or 2017. My format has not changed yet on the new board book, so. The, but they do childcare in our schools at the time that is opposite when the child would be enrolled. So we know we have an AMTM schedule proposed for elementary. Riverside Parks and Recreation has suggested that they could have the alternate half-day for families, as well as some before and after school. So families really could get a full extended day if they, if they need that. We have the IGA, so it really becomes a side agreement that would kind of ride with the IGA for Riverside Parks and Rec. I will tell you that then we reached out, and actually Brookfield Parks and Recreation had been reaching out to us even prior to the pandemic, with a real interest in beginning to expand their programming and services specifically for Hollywood School, given that Hollywood is in Brookfield. So it seemed to kind of follow a rationale that we've had around working with our village partners with Parks and Rec to then begin to work with Brookfield Parks and Recreation. I will share with you that the agreement with Brookfield has to be different simply because we don't already have an IGA with them. It becomes a more formal, not more formal, just a new contractual relationship that we are trying to sort of potentially work through those details there. But again, I know there's a complex motion set up here that our attorney actually crafted, again, a similar thing that you would allow me to work with the attorneys to work on the appropriate contracts and to work with these two entities so that we could set up this program. Because we know, again, once there's, once again, it's a timing issue here to be able to offer the programs to our families for Riverside and over Brookfield, to be able to set up these programs, all of this by September 2nd, our first day of school. So again, it's, if there's a, again, sort of a board endorsement of working through these processes with these entities, and the board could direct me to do so. And this one actually, though, does have a more formal action attached to it.
Martha, do you know if the Village of Brookfield has any type of agreement with any other institutions, similar to ours, that we're requesting?
What I understand, and some of you may understand this better than I do, that their Parks and Recreation Department has kind of more recently expanded, maybe under some new leadership. So I think they are going to offer a program for District 95 children. They are going to offer that in their Village Hall site, because I think actually District 95 has another relationship with another provider. And we had agreed that if Brookfield were to do this at Hollywood, they could do it onsite at Hollywood School, because we also did not want to mix District 95 and District 96 kids in the midst of a pandemic, given the sort of potential quarantine isolation issues. We, you know, talking to the superintendent there, we agree that's just something, a mess we don't even want to contemplate. So hopefully not ever a mess that would, that would occur there, but it just seems safest to keep the programming at the school. I know we've worked with Kim, and Kim believes the gymnasium, right, would be available and could be used as a, as the site for that.
Would the staff be transitioning between districts if they have an agreement with 95, or did the same?
They have staff just dedicated to the Hollywood program? And then staff dedicated to their program at Village Hall? So, yeah, just given the ratios that they need for childcare services, really, they're, I think they're waiting for a number, and then they would hire the appropriate staff. I think they kind of have staff potentially on call for these services.
Right, I think we would need a devoted staff, for sure.
For the sake of like simplicity and consistency, would it make sense to consider having, or did you consider having Riverside Parks and Recreation run the Hollywood program as well? I know a lot of our students at Hollywood are, live, do live in Riverside.
Right.
Which seems in some ways simpler for the administration to deal with one party rather than two, and making sure the programs are consistent and so forth. So do you consider that option?
Yeah, we did. And actually, even as we move through the contractual details, you know, our attorney has pointed out to me that the contractual details are much simpler already having that IGA in place. So, you know, I think initially I was wanting to be responsive to the eagerness of Brookfield Parks and Recreation and thinking that this is a program and a service that they had sort of been very interested in over time. But it probably would be easier. So I, I think that's, that's a question, you know, for the board as, as well. Again, it's a, it's a new relationship with Brookfield Parks and Recreation. We haven't worked with them before. Riverside has always provided the before and afters care at Hollywood. They have certainly treated all of our District 96 schools. And they, I believe, have even allowed Brookfield families to pay the in-district fee, you know, the resident fees for, for services.
I think there's a lot to be said for simplicity, and, and, I mean, personally, I think it just makes things, often does make things easier, so I think, I definitely think it should be a consideration.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Jeff as well. I think, I mean, if we could just have it be simplistic, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm fine with, with going with Brookfield, but I guess my question, I just want, simplicity is, I think it seems like it would just be easier, and something, just to have, deal with one person, I mean, one organization. I guess one question you did, one question, something you said that did spur a question, though, Martha, I'm assuming that Riverside residents who live in Hollywood area would pay the same, that there would be the same cost, there wouldn't be a different being cost, correct?
Right, I mean, I have not seen their cost, but I would assume, I would assume so, David. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess sort of that, too. I mean, I'd hate to have one set of schools paying one price, another set of schools paying another price.
I, I think that would most definitely have to be precondition. I think I fathom that, that would be, you know, I just, I couldn't see that being an issue. If it, if it was set out that way, then that would be unacceptable.
I assume both parties are understanding of the protocols that we have in place, and they've agreed to follow them. If they're going to be using our facilities and our students, you know, just, I would hate for something to fall through the cracks with the after-school program that impacts the broader district.
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, they have, they have daycare centers or daycare providers have a significant number of requirements, and we also have requirements for them, as are really very similar to what are already spelled out in that Riverside IGA.
Well, as far as the, maybe this is just what you said, but as far as like the mask, the temperature, like all the, yeah, okay.
Yeah, symptom checking, physical distancing, mask wearing, pan hygiene.
I guess I should say that one of my daughters actually worked for the Brookfield Park District over the summer as a counselor for their summer camp, their day camp. I'm very limited, but my experiences with them were definitely, they ran a tight shift. Definitely that was something that was important for our family to make sure that, you know, the kids were masked and that it was a well-run program and that it was run by professionals. And that was something that was observed all summer. I definitely hear Jeff and your idea of simplicity makes a lot of sense. I come, I'm thinking from a slightly different perspective in that would there be something to said, to be said for having two different programs, possibly coming up with different ideas or different ways of attacking similar problems that might, you know, be able to cross-pollinate and provide ideas from one to the other? If that makes sense.
Can I ask a question? So would the preschoolers be included in this at Ames? So if we had a family from Hollywood and they had a three-year-old that needed extra care after their program, but then they had a different company they were working with for their other child at Hollywood School, that could be an issue? Would that be happen?
So, that's a great question. The program, I believe, is K-5.
It's K-5. That's what I wanted to know, because, I mean, that would make no sense to have a family going to live two institutions.
I think it might just be that they have different requirements for their pre-K population and childcare.
All right, Dan, I think your point's well taken. I mean, it's the other side of the coin, is that you have two vendors, then you have, you know, compare them, contrast them, you get a possibility of competition. So I think that's, that's also, could be valuable. I just think right now, I mean, I were administrator, I'd want to make my life as simple as possible because we have so much else going on. But that's, again, that's not my call, so I don't really care one way or the other.
I guess my, my thing is sort of going back to the cost. As long as the costs are across the same, I mean, I don't know how you can do that, but I wouldn't want one group paying more than another group.
No, that's just not equitable, then.
I would just, I would say that would be a deal breaker.
And do you mean the resident, like the resident, non-resident fees? Or you mean if Brookfield has a way to offer the program, whether it's more or less, or that, that all fees should be the same regardless of the school that your child is enrolled in?
Yeah, because I can see, like, if, let's say Hollywood's paying less, but Ames is, similarly, if like, we have a Riverside student who's taking part in a Brookfield activity, they should be getting in, like, a resident's fee, like the resident's cost, not the.
Just like Riverside.
Yeah, I guess I took it the way David described it, as resident versus non-resident, essentially paying the same at Hollywood. I, I definitely could be, that would be a great thing if the pricing could be unified across the board. I don't know that I would, that would be something I could insist upon for all schools.
Yeah, it depends on the programming. I mean, I think one thing that's missing for me, that I'm having difficulty with this excellent, is like some of the details about their programming, because we had presentations from Riverside Park, but we haven't heard from the Brookfield. And I think it'd be nice to hear what kind of programs they're going to offer, and if it is the same caliber of quality, yeah, that would be nice, and the cost, like the others are saying.
Yeah, I realize that, that in moving forward with even consideration of this, this is something that I know had been a very significant issue, right, for, for the district to make a shift with the before and after care providers. So again, it's a, it's a critical piece of information, or it's a critical decision, I should say, that we're kind of making in a much more rapid timeframe than we would do during normal times. But I, I hear the, so I hear some concerns about maybe cost differential between Riverside and Hollywood. And I don't mean the, I guess a definite concern about if Riverside residents versus Brookfield residents were paying differently for the same program would be unacceptable. But I hear an interesting question of the cost structure of Riverside program compared to the Brookfield program. And I, because I wouldn't be determining their costs, I really wouldn't be able to necessarily establish that as a requirement. So that's, I see that as a challenge. And certainly setting up a brand-new contract over a short timeframe. The side agreement with Riverside feels almost easy, right? And it's easy because we already have the IGA with them. So again, I think, I appreciate the feedback, and I also just thank everybody for sort of thinking flexibly and openly about these ideas because we are kind of moving here just, just so quickly, but really in the name of wanting to support all of our families and our students and our employees also. So we've been talking about just, you know, really important pieces of how, how we do this. And again, with our goal being that we want to have an excellent educational program for our students this year in the midst of a pandemic, and there are significant challenges in that.
So unless I'm misinterpreting this, the way I read this as the addendum or the amendment is really only in regards to use of district facilities, not necessarily the programming
Right, so the programming is really, like, we don't dictate their programming because they have their own staffing issues, programming issues, requirements and guidelines. So the agreement says, you know, we want, the agreement says we're going to let you use our facilities. But then you're going to have to follow some.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying that, because I feel like that is getting, like a lot of the other conversation is getting into actual programming and all that kind of stuff. But really, for this, for the purposes of this agreement that's in front of us, it's just that they can use our facilities in the way that they need to because of this change compared to typical before and after timeframes. For number, for item number two, in the, it says amendment, general terms placed times of use, building access are hereby amended to permit the village to utilize school districts, schools and facilities during the set times in Exhibit A, dah dah dah. So it's really just about them being able to host the programming, you know, use our facilities through this agreement, and we're amending that because they're going to need to use it at different times than we currently do. So it's purely just, what we're talking, what is in front of us to approve is purely just the use, a change in use of our facilities.
But it's related to whether or not we, we don't know anything about the program. But it's related to whether or not we, we don't know anything about the programming.
But if you read just the recommended motion, the motion is authorizing the superintendent to move forward with this. I don't think it's specifically approving these exact amendments.
Yeah.
And that was, again, a motion recommended by Brian, Brian Carolla, who's one of our attorneys who works with us on a lot of contractual issues, just given that there should be board action on this. But the, the only board action right now is to kind of authorize these steps.
Because you're not there yet.
Right.
So if, so if we don't like Brookfield's programming, we'll say you can't use our facilities? Is that, I mean, I guess I just, I'm, I'm lost in why we're getting into so much detail about what they're offering and all that kind of stuff.
Well, because it could either be one entity or two, and I think I, I'm hearing what Dr. Miller's saying about just keeping it simple.
It's the introduction of the other entity. I don't know that it's really about their programming. It's the introduction of the other entity. Does the district want to engage in relationships with two different entities?
So lastly, I remember before your, 10 years on the board, there was, this was a hot topic, what, five years ago, about the provider of the after-school program moving from one vendor to a different system. And so I, I don't know if maybe.
That could be why you're asking some.
And this is, and this is a new vendor. The previous process was a year long.
Right, it was, it was much more, we had more information and I, I feel almost like I can't answer the question today because I just don't have the information I need. And maybe others are fine, but I'm at a loss right now for making a decision.
Well, it looks like the, the resolution, as it's written again, kind of directs the superintendent, or gives the superintendent this latitude, I suppose, behind that. If we were to vote on this, that we would, could direct one, one direction or another? Would that make sense?
Or you could modify the motion and only direct me to work with one entity. You know, I mean, I think that's, given the questions the board is asking. It just talks about the villages, the Villages of Riverside and Brookfield for the villages to provide.
I understand the idea of wanting to create a partnership with Village of Brookfield, but I fully support it 100%. I think maybe where some of the board members are concerned is just we, you know, that entity is not known to us, so, you know. Is right now, two weeks before the school year, the time to pursue it? I don't know. I mean, I'll be honest, I would trust your opinion on this. Would it be easier to go with the downed product at the moment? Probably. But I don't want to ruin the possibility of connection to the Village of Brookfield because I think that's a great connection to make. But I just don't know if middle of the pandemic is the best time to pursue it. But again, like, like Dr. Miller said, I think I would leave it up to your judgment on that. But I do appreciate the simplicity and the known. I think it might be easier to be dealing with one vendor in this situation, just as Jack said, versus let's be safe. But again, I wouldn't.
Well, perhaps should we go around and, and ask, so Linda, if you were to ask one vendor or two?
I would be, whatever marketing picks as best.
Okay. So, so one vendor or superintendent's discretion, perhaps, is that a better way to say it?
I appreciate that question. I mean, I, I think that's helpful, that, that's helpful to me based on the conversation here tonight.
Sherry?
At this point, I'm going to just say, I just don't have the information to make a decision.
Well, we're not voting on anything per se.
You're asking me one or the other right now. It is really next thing for me, even to answer that question, because I just don't have the information on the programming.
Okay.
You know, I understand what Linda's saying, I think, but, you know, I can agree with it, but Brookfield's not going anywhere. I mean, they're not going away. So next year or two years from now, whenever we want to establish a program with them, I don't see any reason why we can't. But right now, there's so many things going on that are so pressing, so difficult, I think. It's making things as simple as possible makes a lot of sense to me. So I would, unless there are compelling reasons to the contrary, I would sort of advocate just going Riverside for now, for this year.
So I think Jeff said it best.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with, I think we just should just go with Riverside. I'd like to explore Brookfield next year, but I don't think, just sort of given the pandemic, given everything that's going on, if there's like an outbreak or something, we might be dealing with, I mean, who knows how this is going to end up, but we'd be dealing to organizations that were having to deal with outbreaks and what's going to happen there. So I'm just saying stick with one, and I'd say stick with Riverside because we've got it already in place.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with altering this to provide the Village of Riverside Parks and Rec stuff. I guess I don't fully understand the discussion around Village of Brookfield, so I just need to talk that through a little bit more to wrap my head around what exactly we're, I think this is more involved than what I initially thought based on reading it, so.
And I think actually that's what I've learned in the past couple of days, is it's more involved than I initially thought too, so I appreciate that, yeah.
Okay. Well, so it sounds like we should modify this or we'll modify the motion so as to mention just Village of Riverside. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to, for the board to authorize the superintendent and school district attorney to negotiate agreement, an agreement with the Village of Riverside for the village to provide childcare services at school district schools while the school district undertakes a hybrid education scheduled during the 2020, 2021 school year and further authorize the superintendent to sign such agreements after superintendent and school district attorney review? So moved.
Second.
Okay, we talked it to death, or do we want to talk some more?
Everybody likes to debate.
Okay. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Varsady.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Meerehead.
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mrs. Clever.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, next, is there any additional public comment?
I did receive one.
Okay.
It actually went to D96.org and said District 96, and so it, it ended up in, anyway, let me, it did get, it did get to us. So this is from Kerry and Matt Huffman. It just said, hi, I just listened to a representative from the Riverside Education Council share statistics from a survey that was taken by D96 teachers. I did not write down the percentages, but it sounded like the majority of the teachers wanted to start the school year remotely due to the increase in COVID-19 numbers. Why weren't parents made aware of these statistics prior to needing to make a choice and return to learn? We think many families would like to know this prior to making a decision. More thoughts? Question mark. And thank you so much for passing the Hollywood House agreement. We are so excited Hollywood will finally get a safe playground for our kiddos. Thanks, Kerry and Matt Huffman.
Okay. Anything further? If not, future meeting dates, September 2nd, 2020, meeting of the whole, 7:00 PM, at a location to be determined. Next is September 16th, regular business meeting. In the Hauser Auditorium, the board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.